Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I would ask that our City Clerk, City Agy, make the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act into the record, please.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, but the meeting schedule provided to the Trenton Times and the Hunter County Democrat. Meeting agenda was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall and the city's website. The meeting notice was provided to the Trenton Times, the Hunter County Democrat, some members on the list, sir, Department head, and to the city engineer. The meeting agenda provides for all actual items known at the time of publication and is subject to change. The meeting will be streamed live and recorded using the Zoom meeting platform. Please note, we've made some changes to our Zoom account due to issues with public comment during our last council session. The city reserves the right to remove anyone who displays behavior that is offensive.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please, Cindy?
Councilwoman Lambert?
Here.
Council Ms. Sanders?
Here.
Council Ms. Stegman?
Here.
Council President Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Noah?
Here.
If we would please rise to the plegial agents and then stay standing for a moment of silence. The Plegial Agents.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's reflect this evening on the terrible situation in Ukraine and send our hopes and our best thoughts to all the Ukrainians. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's a big night with potentially big ramifications for our city. On February 22nd of last year, Governor Murphy signed into law PL 2021 C-16, which legalized the recreational use of marijuana by adults 21 years of age or older, and established a comprehensive regulatory and licensing scheme for commercial recreational adult-use cannabis operations. In the spring and summer of last year, the Lambertville City Council, in close partnership with the community, held several hearings to gauge interest in cannabis retail operations in the city. There was widespread support, and on July 22nd, 2021, the council held a second reading and public hearing before adopting Ordinance 16-21, amending the land use regulations to permit the operation of Class C cannabis, Class V cannabis retailer license. The ordinance permits a total of four retail operations in the city, with a preference for two micro businesses. Two can be situated in the Central Business District, one in the C2 Service Commercial District, and one in the C3 General Commercial District. This evening, the city council will consider whether to authorize or deny the applications for three Class V cannabis retail businesses: Baked by the River, Jersey Girls, and Union Chill. Because of the significant public interest in these matters, and because some members of the public were unable to attend the planning board meetings, the council has voted to move the public comment period to the beginning of the meeting. I would note this is an exception to our usual practice. We will not have public comment at the end of the meeting tonight. We did this so that everybody could be here early and make their statement or ask their questions. I know, I just confirmed that, and I just talked to the attorney about it. So, we're okay with this, right? As long as I'm answered. So there'll just be one public comment period tonight, and we're about to start that in a minute. At our last city council meeting, the council did refine public comments, public comment policy for city council meetings. I'm just going to read those to everybody now, so that we're clear. This is a little bit of a change from the previous council sessions back in 2021 and prior to that. So, beginning, I'll probably ask how many members of the public wish to provide comments, just by a show of hands to gauge how much interest there is on any given evening. Members of the public shall provide comments from the designated podium, unless they request flexibility because of mobility issues. Members of the public shall state their name and address. Uninterrupted remarks and/or questions from members of the public shall be limited to three minutes, unless additional time is granted by a majority of the council. No person shall address any specific council member, nor any other person except by permission of the majority of the council. No person shall engage in personally offensive or abusive remarks. The chair shall call to order anyone who violates this rule. Members of the public who are present in person shall speak first. Members of the public who attend via Zoom will speak thereafter. The chair or the council members may respond, or they may not respond, especially in meetings where there's a lot of public comment. So bearing that in mind, just a show of hands, how many people intend to speak tonight? Just so I get a rough idea? Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll begin with public comments. So the first person will step up to the podium.
Like it's sworn in, or that's just at the planning board?
No, that's just for the planning board. If you could state your name, please.
I'm going to... Oh, my name is...
Just say your name and your address, please.
Okay. Cynthia Benaduce, 189 North Union Street, Lambertville. I've been really torn. The Business Union Chill wants to open in what used to be the Antique Store in the same building where Dig Yoga was. And I'm 200 feet away, so I was notified of this. And the people are very nice with Union Chill. And I do think they have the interest of Lambertville at heart. They want to hire local and give back to the community as best they can. The problem is, of course, as was brought up at the planning meeting, that Elm Street is a narrow street. And I do feel that when there are a lot of customers for the cannabis, especially from Pennsylvania and from all the counties in New Jersey that do not permit retail dispensaries, 70%, that there is going to be so much traffic at peak times that it really is not fair to the residents on Elm Street. They already deal with trucks from lease lumber. And I just think that even though there are some commercial businesses in C3, it's not like the Central Business District. And I do think it would really be an unfair burden on the residents. And what I want to do to give some merit to this position is, the people from Union Chill said they're anticipating 10 salespeople, bud tenders, as they call them. And they think that the transactions will be about 10 minutes each. So if each bud tender is dealing with six customers, and you have 10 bud tenders, that's 60 vehicles coming in to this narrow driveway and purchasing their marijuana. They also said that they have the capacity, and I believe the hope, to have 15 bud tenders. Okay, so if you do the math on that, that brings the number of cars up to 90. 90 cars in an hour. Now, that's a lot of cars coming down Elm Street. That's a lot of cars on North Union. I really think it's unfair to the residents that are very close, especially the resident who has the house right on the driveway. I think her life may be a nightmare. And here's the thing that has not even been brought out at the planning meeting: The space that was formerly Dig Yoga is vacant. And it's huge. What kind of a business is going to go in there? A business that's going to need cars and customers? And if we already have a possible 90 cars coming in per hour for the Union Chill cannabis business, and then we have to add the...
Maybe just three minutes.
What? Oh, I'm done? Okay, I'm sorry. Just very quickly to wrap up, if we add the cars that come in for the Dig Yoga space, it's, it, the sky's the limit, I think. And it's not, there's not going to be enough parking, and it's unfair to the residents.
If you could refrain from clapping, please, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
If you want to speak, please start to line up.
Susan Turkheimer, 207 North Union. I spoke last time, and basically we discussed this. One of the things I found, and may I address council, is that medical marijuana, as of what I read, has to be 1,000 feet from a school. That's with pharmacists, et cetera. Whereas with very little thought, this is my opinion, we decided the planning board, 500 feet, because there isn't a wall in effect. Now, why do we need to have 1,000 feet with a facility that is managed by pharmacists and scientific peoples that actually know and don't have to give classes and things like that in a school zone? Whereas now, we decided, oh, let's just go with the ABC, and it was that quick. Several of you were at that meeting. Oh, let's just do this, 500 feet. And everybody argued about where the 500 feet margin was. I don't believe that the ABC rules, which are for alcohol, which mommy and daddy have a glass of wine, and your child will see that and understand that as they grow up, is synonymous with sitting at dinner and smoking a joint. So I feel strongly that we should take a look at that and the position of that space in relationship to the school. I feel the same way my neighbor does about the traffic. It will be terrible. I've had many times my car has been scarred, as have all the neighbors. There's also, they measured it to the school. We've got bus stops that are much closer than the actual physical school. And the ABC laws say places where children congregate, houses of worship, et cetera. There is a church on South Main and North Main as well. I don't know if anybody took that into account. Again, the size of that empty space is, who's going to go there? Just see what else I have there, because Cynthia covered so much of what... Really, I just feel that it's too close to the school. It's in a very residential neighborhood. There isn't a need for it there. Had, I think, the public known, I think the one in town is perfectly situated, the one down by the river is better situated. The one in a neighborhood where our children play is poorly situated. And, this was my last point. Didn't a $30 million bill just go by to build the new school with Stockton and West Amwell? Am I correct on that? That bill passed?
Yes.
Okay. I foresee that there's going to be problem with that when they find out how close we are dealing with people from two other communities, and there might be a large problem, and there goes our school. And that's something to think about, about the future of Lambertville, as much as the traffic, as much as anything else. I wouldn't, I would be in flames if I was in West Amwell and knew this was happening.
Thank you. Just a couple of points there. The 500 feet designation was by the ordinance, not by the planning board, just a correction there. And I believe, just to let you know, I think that the church you may be referring to on North Main is actually an office building. Is that the one across from the Colson Farm?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's an office building.
When I, if, if...
No, I'm sorry, we're done.
Oh.
We have three minutes, that's it. I'm just letting you know a couple of things. So, and also, I believe that West Amwell has passed five separate classes of cannabis business. So presumably, one won't be too much trouble for them.
Could you just give me a half a second on that? When I was at the meeting last with the planning board, nobody could decide on how close, because there wasn't a regulation. And the woman sitting in your spot said, why don't we follow the ABC rules?
No, it's in the ordinance, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
If you'd like to read the cannabis ordinance, you'll see that it's in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sure.
Hi, thank you for having us speak. I'm Carolyn Buckley, president of the Rivers Edge Owners Association, comprised of 11 households on Lambert Lane. Significant majority of us are quite concerned about the fallout of traffic gridlocks and pedestrian and cyclist safety due to the limited access to the Jersey Girls' proposed location at AV Lambert Lane, as well as to the DNR canal path. Rivers Edge and other Lambert Lane residents appreciate the planning board's decision, I guess a couple weeks ago, to require a traffic study done in conjunction with the planning of this large-scale and presumed quite popular business. We hope that there is a proper planning and due diligence by the city planner, city engineer, and the police department to ensure that the safety of Lambertville residents and the much-needed tourists are safe during their travels to and from the local businesses and their homes. Please keep the surrounding neighborhood informed of this traffic study's progress. We've already been kind of not reached out to when this whole process was starting from Jersey Girls, so they did not reach out like the Baked on the River. They did such a great community outreach, and we have had really none. So I just ask that the city somehow keep us informed. When the study provides solutions to mitigating the narrow Lambert Lane, the limited sidewalk paths, and the lack of bicycle lanes, we respectfully ask that you consult the people who will be living with these solutions on a daily basis. We appreciate that you have heard our concerns and that the city and Jersey Girls will work on a comprehensive plan for the surrounding neighbors and the many visitors that come to visit a small, quaint river town. I thank you for listening, to the Rivers Edge and Lambert Lane residents. We are here, ready to be willing participants for reasonable solutions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Bronstrung, Falls, 221 North Union. I'm sitting my own time. So I just, I was here at the planning board meeting. At the planning board meeting, the consideration of this issue did not begin until 1:00 AM. So I had to write this out, give it to my neighbor, because I had to get home to a babysitter. So I also want to point out that I feel like the consideration at the planning board meeting was not fully heard in front of the full community because of the late, incredibly late hour in which it was addressed. And I see some neighbors were nodding. So I wanted to talk about four specific areas of concern that I have in particular for the, just the location, not the business itself being here in town, just the location of the proposal for 204 North Union, which is on my block. So one is, again, the proximity to LPS. So I just wanted to clarify a little bit that, you know, it doesn't violate the letter of the law, but I wonder, does it really meet the spirit of the law? And 569 feet, even, you know, in thinking also door-to-door, there's a young children playground right there at the edge of Elm Street. We walk to and from school every day, right by this building. So I think also, you know, both entrances that are proposed would be directly on that path and within the, you know, the end of the street, within visibility of the preschool playground. The second issue is quality of life, with special consideration for the devastation that our end-of-town suffered from Ida. We have not come back. This is still, really, it felt like somebody died. It felt like the end-of-town died. And we are on the end of that street. We were the last block that was spared. And we are like the survivors of this. Our neighbors are still struggling, the businesses are struggling. I'm just concerned about whether, you know, this is really how we want to kind of come back. So I will say that. You know, the third thing that I wanted to talk about, right, is just like, you know, is it that opening a marijuana dispensary in our still fragile community would really bring benefits to the residents on the block? Again, I foresee this as mostly kind of a business that people would come and go to, not one that is really geared towards really the residents of town, unlike some other types of businesses. The fourth thing is the number of variances in continuing non-conforming use requests demonstrated needed for this building. Again, I'm not against the business or its location in Lambertville. I think in some ways it's a good thing for Lambertville. But that particular building and that particular location, I have a ton of concerns about, in large part because that, it's, again, a predominantly residential area. That is a blind corner walking, because, again, I walk it every day with my kids. That driveway is very narrow, coming in and out to the street, the trucks. Some of the things that have been addressed. Where that ramp would go is like the tightest possible corner. There was no visibility approaching from west to east. And again, with small children, I'm concerned about that. So again, parking lot access, pedestrian safety, the ramp where it's supposed to be built. And again, just extra consideration to the fact that the north end of town is really still struggling. That's all.
There is statute that existed for 1,000 feet, a drug-free school, a drug-free district around schools. Under that legislation, my understanding is that local municipalities drew up maps where they had 1,000 feet from the school property, so that law enforcement would know where that 1,000-foot demarcation was, and they could enforce the law properly. It seems to me that your late decision the other night to make the 500-foot marker to be door-to-door is an inappropriate decision. It does not make sense. A school property could be, take any shape. It could take the shape of a dog or a tree. And you don't, I don't think it makes sense to have any kind of exclusion just from one point on that property to another. I think that we probably have, in the police department, maps of the 1,000-foot limit for drug use that could be used in making decision as to whether or not the Union Street property falls within and without that zone. Secondly, the other issue I wanted to bring up is that, and I would respectfully ask you to reconsider your late decision about making that 500-foot distance a door-to-door distance as a result of that. Secondly, in looking things up, there's a site that is, provides advice to municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey. And one of the things that was very clear on that site is that a lot of communities have, instead of choosing a shorter distance, 500 feet like we have, other communities have even chosen shorter distances than that, and are having difficulties getting that done, Princeton notably. Other communities went out of their way and maintained the 1,000-foot difference. And I believe, I'm assuming, they made that decision because there is still federal liability for having any kind of drug facility within 1,000 feet. That federal law has not changed. And I believe there's some risk to the township, I don't know the township, but at least to the individuals who are going to have these stores, that they may be prosecuted under that law. And I certainly think the community members, if they don't feel very happy about this, might decide to do something like that. So thank you for your time.
I'm going to ask again, please, that you refrain from clapping. This is public comment period, not a circus.
Good evening, my name is Carol Hoekje, H-O-E-K-J-E. I live at 205 North Union Street. I thank the council for providing this opportunity for public comment at the beginning of the hearing. I was unable to attend the hearing last week. I was told by the planning board that they would not accept written comment. However, my daughter was there and stayed until 1:30 in the morning and noted that there were many people that appeared that apparently wanted to speak, and due to the lateness of the hour, they weren't able to. I share the concerns previously expressed by my neighbors concerning traffic, not only up and down Elm Street, but turning left off of the North Union, or right coming the other way. The speed bumps that used to be there have not been put back in yet. I think that's a concern. But primarily, I share the concern of my neighbor Lauren concerning the devastation of Hurricane Ida to our residential area. I was lucky, my property was not damaged. But mentally, I tell you, it was horrible. Hearing the stories from that night, seeing the darkness that exists, still exists, down in, up in that area, the struggles that our neighbors have in putting their properties back together. It's really, it's really a lot for the residential neighborhood. And I question whether this is the right time to approve and support a business, a cannabis business, for a business purpose, as opposed to a residential need or purpose or benefit. I note that the ordinance was adopted prior to Hurricane Ida. I don't know that the planning board made any consideration of the effect of Hurricane Ida on the residential neighborhood. I asked that the council take that into consideration. And I asked my daughter, who was here at the hearing, if there was any... I was concerned about surveillance cameras on the outside of the building and whether or not they reached the sidewalk. Because if they do, that, those cameras are going to pick up all the residents walking their dogs. And I don't think that's appropriate either. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Good evening, I'm Bart Thurber, I'm at 53 Lambert Lane, and appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I just want to mention, first of all, that I hope Jesse doesn't mind that I mention her by name, because I was here at the planning board meeting, the 23rd of February, when we couldn't have had a more vivid contrast between a micro-business, Baked by the River. And I really appreciated, Jesse, during the testimony, that so many of your neighbors and businesses, who had serious concerns, came up to testify on behalf of your application. Having 51% of a local, at least 51% of a local resident, I have to say, this is my own education during this period of time. I didn't participate in the deliberations last summer. I wasn't able to do so, but I do recognize Ward Sanders and many residents did. I also believe that many of them at the time had recommended micro-businesses only for Lambertville. And again, Baked by the River illuminated, for me, the big differences between the limitations on the amount, having a scheduled system. I was just learning this evening, by the testimony about Union Chill, their estimates is actually 10 patrons every 10-minute intervals with 15 buds people, I guess we would call them. And the testimony by Jersey Girls was having as many as 20 buds people, could even increase. I had allocated 15 minutes, and that came to 5,360 customers per week. So 67 hours times the 80 per hour, that's how I arrived at that figure. That's an enormous amount of volume. And again, it brought home to me the big differences between a micro-business, just as we have a micro brewery back there, River Horse Brewery, operated 18 hours a week, compared to big business conglomerate, Jersey Girls represented by Fedway. And that's an enormous concern to me. I don't know how we could possibly go back to the ordinance from July 22nd, 2021, but if it were possible to consider micro-businesses only. And finally, I just want to say, I went back to the redevelopment, the reexamination plan from 2019 for the city. And I found the terms "character" and "quality" referenced about 30 times. And Mayor Norwick was very kind to have a conversation about the subjective nature of some of these. But I also came upon the words that appear over 30 times about neighborhood and community. These things matter to us. And having that level of business coming over and affecting, and I realize I'm just about at the end of my time, Julia, so I'll stop here in just a moment. So I just, again, I want to reiterate what somebody had mentioned before about Union Chill. That which is reasonable, that which is manageable, and that which is sustainable for our community, with the hope that we can revisit the ordinance to allow only micro-businesses at this time. Thank you.
Hello, Jacqueline Romero, I'm at 31 Lambert Lane. And my problem is with the Jersey Girls facility in particular, but I also sympathize with the folks over on Union Street, because I think they're facing similar problem with that facility. My biggest objection here is the process, honestly. We hardly got any notice that this size of a facility was coming on Lambert Lane. It's been shoved down our throat in under a month period. The planning board rushed this through. They were told specifically by the companies, if you don't agree to allow us to move forward, we're going to sue. We're going to lose our ability to go into New Jersey by March 15th and get our application through. And if we don't get our application in by March 15th, we're not going to get our license. And the planning board, I believe, caved to that. That they were more thinking about these businesses and what it might mean for the businesses than they were thinking about what's going to happen to Lambert Lane, what's going to happen to Union Street when this goes in. They, we all agree, the traffic situation is going to be horrific. And you know that, it's common sense. If you come across the bridge anytime on a weekend and you try and make a left-hand turn on Lambert Lane, it's impossible, you're already sitting there for three minutes. Imagine all the traffic, this 5,000-something cars coming to Lambert Lane on a weekend, what that's going to do to us and change the character of this town and our neighborhood. The process has not been fair. We were never reached out to by this company, Jersey Girls. They said it had no connection to Fedway, which is the largest alcohol distributor in New Jersey. And actually, the CFO of Fedway is the one who's on the application. You can do the math. Now, I sympathize that the town is in dire straits. We want taxpayer money, that this will mean money for taxes. But what it's going to do to this town is horrific. It's as if they said, we're putting a McDonald's on Lambert Lane. None of you would agree to that. That's what this is. It's a 2,500-square-foot retail facility that is going to bring the volume of something like a McDonald's to Lambert Lane. And if you can all look us in the face and say, you're okay with that, then we've lost this town. We are no longer the nicest town in New Jersey, the cute little river town that everybody comes to, the town that... comes to, the town that all of these people put their money into because they wanted to live here because it was a quiet place. The process, we don't have ordinances in place saying where these kinds of large facilities can be located, they should be on a thoroughfare, on a road that can handle them. And we, this has been forced through in a fast manner where we haven't had time to think this through. We haven't had time to say what kind of ordinances make sense. So I ask you to slow the process, please, and just use common sense. What is this going to do to Lambert?
Thank you.
Besides the money? Thank you.
I would just note that the process, I believe, has been fair.
There's no need for rebuttal.
It's not a rebuttal, it's simply the truth. The process has been fair and it has been legal.
You're doing rebuttal.
It's illegal.
Right, next please.
Good evening, Evans Trailway 57, Buttonwood Street, right across from the school. Listen, I'd much rather buy my pot in town at the legal level to get the taxes here, like all the nimby, 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 oh my goodness gracious, we can't put the school off Jefferson Street, and we can't put the dispensary on Lambert Lane, oh my goodness, the property taxes for those folks who've decided to live on Lambert Lane, the people who decided to live on Buttonwood Street near a school, that's my choice. We live in a free-market capitalist society, so if I don't like it, I can move, unfortunately. I'm just shocked at how, oh my God, how could I be saying I'm shocked at how anti-business? Like, I'm so anti-business, and all I can think is, like, this is the right move. The planning board correctly considered the ramifications at its meeting last February. The council is very clearly worried with intelligent people, and quite frankly, like, I think you all understand what is good for our quote-unquote "character" here in town. I mean, how many people like me want to be a part of this community but unfortunately cannot afford it? I mean, look what we could have. You could have an economy that is truly local, one that brings back money into the coffers, and personally, like, I'd much rather walk down the block than drive 40 minutes to spend my money at a dispensary that gets taxed in a different municipality. I'd rather stay here. And I don't know how many of you are medical users or not, but it's expensive, and it's a challenge, man. Why we wouldn't want to have local people doing this here in a town that understands the value of community? I don't know, it feels incongruous to me. Let's see. Oh, and as far as like the whole family values thing is concerned, stoners don't brick windows when they smoke pot, trunks at sports games riot when their team loses and then brick windows. I could go to Bell's right down my street, get hammered and brick any window I want, but Bell's continues to operate. It's almost as if we're supposed to exercise our free will and respect of the law and each other, and if that responsibility isn't on us, then who will it be? Thank you.
I'm selling my house.
You'll make out.
How easy is that?
Hello, I'm Christopher Tenne, 43 Brunswick Avenue, apartment two. Some of you may remember, I spoke in February at the planning board meeting in support of Baked by the River. And I'm not going to go through all the reasons again why I think that they should be able to operate here, but I will say that since that meeting, just, well, seeing all the support that they had at that meeting and talking to people since then, both users of cannabis and non-users, I am just even more sure of the fact that they should be allowed to operate here and that they're exactly the right type of business to sell cannabis in our community. Thank you. I don't know about that.
Diane Koslow, 22 Elm Street. I, you know, traffic. I'm, my door in and out of my house is the closest of anyone to Union Chill. Traffic comes in and out of that driveway, had been dig yoga. We all walk our dogs in the neighborhood. When Robust Wealth had come in, I was on my sidewalk at 8 o'clock in the morning walking my dog, and a man from Robust Wealth came flying around the corner by iron and oak, flying, slammed on his brakes and missed me by about eight feet. So, it's not any of the businesses that want to start up, their fault that traffic's giving me an issue, but traffic's an issue as echoing everybody else. Nice Lumber, we, you know, they're closed from Saturday from 1 o'clock on, and it's quiet on Sundays. We have quiet. I moved here 18 years ago with a five-year-old son to have, and I'm not against cannabis, but echoing what a lot of people I've spoken with in town, we don't want four dispensaries. We think it's too much. I'm not against cannabis, I'm against any retail business that's going, that is new and is going to attract all kinds of people being in a residential neighborhood. I'm concerned about the distance from the school, but I wouldn't, not that I could afford it now, but I wouldn't buy my house to raise a five-year-old son that close to a very busy retail business with people coming in and out that much. When I moved here, there were two other children on my side of the block, and they would ride their bikes up and down, and I could let my son go to a friend's house a few blocks away. You know, there are predictable traffic patterns with Nice and Dig Yoga, which is gone, but Lambertville was the best, one of the best destinations I ever made to help, to come and raise a child, and the community helped me raise my child too, not just me. So, it makes me sad that if Lambert becomes known, it's become more of a tourist destination, which is, has its benefits, but people that come here sense the community that we have and sense that we care about each other and sense that we all help each other, but if we become this hub, you know, one distributor or two small ones is fine, but four, it, not knowing the newness of this and it just, that's what most people that I speak with are concerned about. Me personally, I'm really concerned, because I'm in a narrow row house, and I don't know if anybody else lives in a narrow row house, but you can't get away from noise on the side. You know, it's not a deep house, it's not a wide house, so people are coming and going, coming and going, I'm going to hear it all weekend long. And like most people, we work really hard, and I like quiet on the weekends, and we like our community, so thank you, I feel like I'm a monster, though.
Hi, my name's Kelly Boling, I live at 204 Brunswick Avenue, and I'm just here in support of Baked by the River. And I feel like it's fairly clear at this point that they have a lot of community support, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate that I think that they're basically the ideal situation for Lambertville. Yeah, the planning board meeting, I think there were at least like 50 people here in support of them, and including their neighbors, you know, it was clear that they had reached out. They've done so much work, like building community in town and like making sure that their business is going to enrich, you know, the lives of their neighbors, both other businesses and people in the community. I think another thing I just wanted to highlight is that I think their business is in line with the values that kind of Lambertville purports, like in terms of equity and inclusion. And, you know, it's a women-controlled business. I know, you know, knowing Justin Court, I know that they are planning on working with other women, indigenous-led businesses, you know, they're doing a lot to, I think, do this in the right, in the right way. And yeah, so I guess what I wanted to say is that I feel like they're really doing everything right, and I think we have the opportunity to just kind of let them lead in town, and I think this will set a model for, you know, how we want to do this to whatever scale that people are interested in, so.
Thank you.
Sean Ellis, 204 Brunswick Avenue, I'm on the Board of Education, but I'm speaking personally tonight. I would like to just reiterate that I am in full support of Baked by the River and businesses of that scale. I also do want to see all of the businesses succeed in town, and I think that Lambertville is very early, you know, in, an early adopter of the new recreational state law. And so I think that there's some eyeballs on us, and I think we have an opportunity to lead. And to do that, we, we want to make appropriate decisions and be able to scale up rather than be, have chaos and have to scale back, right? And I think that when the ordinance was being written, thank you, Councilman Sanders, for spearheading, heading that effort, I think that many things were discussed, I know the scheduling system, and that is supposed to be used as a throttle, it doesn't, you know, just because someone says 10-minute intervals, that doesn't mean that we have to accept it, right? I also believe that, I don't think anyone thought that that ordinance was going to be in stone. All of this is very new, and we will hopefully have a chance to revisit it, because I think that it was a mistake to completely ban the Class 6 delivery services, and that is something that we could maybe look at to mitigate some of the traffic flow. You can, you know, deliver 10 to 10 people, and doesn't have to be in Lambertville, it can be outside of Lambertville, but Lambertville still gets that tax money. And, you know, that's 10 fewer cars coming into town, so just want to put it out there that we have options, and I think we're all able to hopefully make a smooth transition here and be an example, and do it appropriately, and try to make it work. Thank you.
I could remind everybody that's, turn your phones off.
Hi, my name is Bennett Schenster, I have a business at 56 Coriel Street, I'm also a resident of New Hope. Thank you, tonight commenting feels meaningful, because I know that you are trying to listen to the business owners and residents before making a decision. Three points. One, it's a, I'm going to be speaking on the Jersey Girls proposed business plan. I think it's too large-scale for the proposed location. They have 26, over 26,000 square foot, 2,600 square foot dedicated to storage and processing, and no cap on how much they can sell. I GPSed a route where the point was right next to 202 on the Pennsylvania side. Maps suggested three routes, and all of them went over the Free Bridge. I know that you've discussed having a traffic study done, but I also suggest that New Hope is a part of that study, because it's going to affect bridge and Main Street significantly, and New Hope already has difficulty with that intersection due to it being a county state road. Other things. As a business in town, I understand tourism is part of Lambertville's success, but I feel this business doesn't fit why people are attracted to the areas. Not really the right tone. Number three, what age do you think of when you hear "girl"? Is it over 15? For me, it is caps at 15. Does the addition of a Z make it more mature? To me, I think it makes it immature, and I do not want to be here in support of a company that advertisers, advertises to minors. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Harris, 26 Church Street. I spoke in support of Baked by the River at the planning board meeting, and I won't enumerate those support points again, other than to say I'm more heartened and more strongly in support of Baked by the River now, having heard the other proposals. And there have been numerous comments about the fact that that size of business really reflects the feel and the size appropriateness for, for our downtown area and for Lambertville as a whole. I'm impressed by the data that some of my neighbors and community members have brought up about the traffic. I won't try to repeat that, I'll just make a point anecdotally. Coming over the river, living on Church Street, going down that Lambert Lane and then Coriel and looping around to Church Street, I have two ways to approach the proposed location for Jersey. One is, which I traffic frequently, one is coming over the bridge and making a left onto Lambert Lane. Other people have noted, and I will say as well, on a good day, that's not an easy intersection. On an already crowded day, it's dangerous. There are two ways of pedestrian crossing, as well as the bridge traffic that gets backed up. I appreciate that the traffic studies are going to be done, and I encourage those. The last point I'll make is that we've talked about the three applications that are in. I wonder, as a business owner, I really respect the planning and the thoughtfulness and the time that goes into putting together a business plan. I think Baked by the River hit the mark. I think the other two businesses, as much as I support them in general, missed the mark in terms of suitability for either their location versus their size and the tenor of the town and what the town can accommodate. So, I wonder if they could go back and say, well, I'm going to have, I'm going to be at this location, but I'm going to do it as a micro-business. Or, I want to continue with a larger business, but I'm going to reconsider my location. I would say that the, there is still one, if I'm not mistaken, there's still one opportunity for an open application, someone to open an application on the south side from a location perspective, and as a micro-business from the mix of four. So, I do think there's still an opportunity to get this right, and I would ask the council to approach that with this in mind, that this is not a done deal. There are still opportunities to bring the right size, the right type of business to Lambertville. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Nukovski, 31 Lambert Lane. A lot of what the woman that preceded me said, I echo, and was what I wanted to say. I think the scope, scale, nature of it, we're moving quickly, we're moving too quickly, and I think what you're hearing, and most of you have either sat in on or heard in detail about both planning board meetings and you're here tonight, is that I don't, I haven't heard any opposition to cannabis retail in town. If anything, I've heard support, and specifically support for a model like Baked by the River. We're moving too fast. I mean, the business will come to us, let's do it right. You know, we've, in my case, I've been more focused on the Jersey Girls application, and I'm disheartened that at the planning board meeting, they stood in front of everyone and said how they wanted to be community-based and they cared what we thought. And up until that point, not one person had been contacted by them, and since then, to my knowledge, and they can, they're here, they can correct me if I'm wrong, not one person has been contacted, despite a meeting until one. There's a lot of people who are upset and very disturbed because they had not reached out to us and seemed to just be following through. So, support Baked by the River model, can we just slow it down and do it right so that everybody feels good about it? Lambertville will get its money from the taxes in the end, and I support that as well. Thank you.
My name's Doug McLeod, I live at 17 Lambert Lane. And I stand here this evening in support of our friends and neighbors' application for the Baked by the River Cannabis Dispensary on Church Street. I think it's a great idea, and that's why I voted for the referendum, in favor of the referendum. I think these kinds of micro businesses, these kinds of neighbors that are going to bring business to Lambertville, that are going to bring visitors to Lambertville, really important. And I couldn't be happier that this application has been so well-done. And I couldn't be more concerned at the way the other two applications have been presented, and the way that the city representatives, the planning board, and others have really kind of lost their sense of responsibility to the citizens of Lambertville in rushing these applications by big companies through, which stands in such stark contrast to the way that the application from Baked by the River has been, has been brought through. Two weeks ago, Wednesday, not quite two weeks ago, when we brought up the fact that nobody from Fedway, Jersey Girls, had contacted anybody on Lambert Lane where they want to put in a facility that's going to bring 5,000 cars a week, at least 5,000 cars a week into our neighborhood. Nobody had contacted us. We were told, oh, let's have coffee tomorrow. Well, we haven't heard a thing. We haven't heard a thing. And the contrast between these two applications couldn't be clearer. We all want these kinds of businesses in our town, but not at that scale. This is unsustainable. We don't know how big it could be, how bad it could be. And I ask you to take a step back, don't go so quickly, as my, as my- As my, as my neighbors, Bart and Jack have mentioned, don't, there's no reason to go this quickly. We can slow down and still be at the leader. We don't have to be the pot capital of New Jersey right now. We've already laid a marker down that we're going to do this and I think that's fantastic. But why are we going so quickly when the, the prospect of cars backed up on every one of the four corners on the biggest streets in town is so unknown? I don't know that it's going to happen, but somebody should have done this planning before here. It's not my responsibility. It's the city's responsibility and that hasn't happened. So please, just let's slow down. Thank you.
Dylan Mortman, 201 North Union. I hear a lot of people complaining about what size companies can be allowed in Lambertville. The law has been passed, the community has spoken, we have already decided what size companies can be in town. So it's not a huge argument you can make because, I don't know, you could have argued while the ordinance was being passed. Everyone is freaking out about traffic. I've heard all the applicants say that they are agreeing to do a traffic study, so I just think we should at least hold off until we see the results of that. I've also heard a few people mention IDA and how it did a lot of damage. You know, weed is legal, it's going to be sold all over the state. Why shouldn't we benefit from those taxes? Like somebody else said, we're going to be driving to other communities to buy cannabis. Why not be able to reinvest that into our own community? The dispensaries that I've spoken to, they've all said that they want to hire local and, you know, once again, not only are taxes being put back into the community, but the money from this industry will also get fed directly to locals. Yeah, I think that's all I got to say, hoping all this goes well.
Is there anyone else in the room before we turn it over to the virtual audience?
Oh yeah, in case anyone else has anything else to say, this is the general public comment period, so if there are other things you would like to address with the council, it doesn't have to be about cannabis. Okay.
Yes, now with the Zoom folks. Mike?
Ask them to raise their hand.
Yes, please. Yeah, if people on Zoom would like to speak at this evening's meeting, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Please state your name and address and we will keep track of the time. Thank you.
Just for the record, how many do we have on Zoom tonight?
We have 30, we had up to 32, we're 31 right now.
Thank you.
Window I have.
Thank you. So a motion to close the public comment? Do we need to do that?
Simo.
Seven.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This evening, we have a presentation from Kristiana Pollak, who is a senior project manager and senior ecologist at Princeton Hydra. She's going to speak briefly to a National Fish and Wildlife Program Foundation grant that she's in, she's going to be applying for on behalf of the city. So please welcome, glad to see you here.
Thank you for this opportunity. I feel like this eclipsed a little bit. But as the mayor said, I want to discuss the grant opportunity sponsored by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation that really seeking proposals for projects that restore ecological value and build resiliency. And we are looking to have a project in town that would do just that. And specifically, we're looking at the class and site, the portion of the class and site where we would restore various functions as we sort of three different goals in mind. First, restoring ecological value, we mentioned providing educational opportunities as well as some passive recreation opportunities. So specifically, what that would look like in terms of ecological values, stabilizing the creek, you know, with IDA came through, this creek became a little more stabilized, which is a natural process, but there's also historic properties or historic structures in place that we want to protect and recover to the city. We'd also want to enhance the floodplain. So right now it's, you know.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone? This is so interesting and I can't hear.
Oh, sorry. So we want to restore, I was thinking, we want to stabilize the creek. It had a lot of damage from IDA and we want to make sure that properties are, that all of the structures are preserved in the future. We're also looking to restore floodplain function and the repairing buffer. So right now, the site really doesn't offer floodplain function. Stormwater just runs off directly into the stream and goes downstream with downstream impacts.
I think you can pick that microphone up and it'll be easier for you. Is it? No? Yes? We have such a soft voice.
Okay. And then I mentioned stormwater. So we want, the project would maintain or retain water, stormwater on-site, so it's not flowing into the stream, it's not flowing downstream to properties. And along those lines, we would also recharge groundwater, which is an important ecological value. And like I said, all of these will have impacts to decrease downstream impacts. Not only will we provide ecological value to the property, but it actually benefits the community at large. And then the educational component, it's a very strong part of any kind of National Fish and Wildlife grant opportunity. There would be an active rigorous outreach during the design process as well as during construction and we'd want to engage the community as much as possible. And then we'd also like to install signage that explains what we did and what's, what's happening, how it helps the, the greater nature and little projects that leave this around, you know, the community and what people can do in their own yards to help. And then passive recreation opportunities. So we envision sort of a walking path that could connect some of the nearby nature trails. So public access is very important to the project and making it successful. So applications are due at the end of the month. We have a lot to do before then, but we'll be working with the environmental commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission as well to develop the proposal and then have it submitted. So I just wanted to sort of inform you guys of what's going on in the background.
Thank you. I would just say that I think that a lot of what you're talking about is in line with some of the community values expressed over the course of the last year. So certainly there'll be a period of time for public comment. We'll want to bring the public in while you're working on this grant. We'll obviously need to dovetail our, our work and our expectations with Green Acres. That'll be a component of this as well. So there'll be plenty of time for public comment and council comment and we're really just at the beginning of this and this just happened very quickly, so I didn't have a chance really to kind of dive into the, you know, dive into this with the council, but it seems like it's a worthwhile opportunity to, to start and we'll, we'll have conversations about it. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I have a question from the beginning, I don't want to bog us down here, but I was sort of curious what the size of the grant that we're talking about, is like a $4,000 or $400,000? You know what the size of the scope is?
So the grant sizes vary. There's sort of minimums 250,000, the maximum is 1.5 million. There is a grant match though, it's one-to-one. So, you know, we're proposing a 1.5 million dollar ask, then we have to provide 1.5. So we have to sort of taper expectations. However, a grant can, the match can be provided in in-kind support. So any work that the city does on it, we've talked about incorporating students to help with planting, all of that is seen as an in-kind match. It would be maximized and maximized as possible.
And who's going to, I mean, is, does Princeton Hydra have a role? Who's going to project manage and make sure this actually gets done as we get the grant?
So we need to sort of ask the details. I envision the city will be the applicant. Princeton Hydra would want to be involved and manage it. So I live in town, so when I work there, I also live in town and have a vested interest in seeing the town increase its ecological value and decrease flooding. And then we, we're looking to do more of a design build, so we'll also bring a contractor in as part of the proposal process. So if anyone has recommendations, there's something that we need to act on.
Thank you for your reference.
Thank you. Just quickly, she does also volunteer on the CRS committee. She, she has put in a lot of hours and they're all volunteer. So thank you for that.
So we're going to move now on to the cannabis applications themselves. I would propose that we do each one individually. Is everybody okay with that on the council?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to talk about the traffic studies in general first.
Yes, Ken. So what I was going to do, what I would propose is that I would read the body of the resolution without the beginning and the end, so the public could hear all of the components of the requirements as they explicitly relate to the planning board, which will also include language about the traffic studies.
Okay, but I'd like to talk about them generally, not each, not one by one. I'd like to talk about the concept of the traffic studies.
Okay. Well, can we, can we start with the first, which is Baked by the River? And then the traffic studies will be, the traffic study language is identical in the other two applications. So would you be okay with considering Baked by the River first?
Sure.
And, is that okay? All right. So.
I don't think we have that caveat on there.
They do not. They do not. So I'm just going to read the text of the resolution here so that everybody understands kind of what would be.
Speak up, it's hard to hear you.
Sure. I'm going to read the text of the, the resolution, just so everybody in the public can understand what is actually in the resolution in terms of, in terms of the application process. So this is not to, you know, authorize or deny the resolution, it's just to get the language out there. So we're talking about a resolution to either authorize or deny the cannabis application filed by Baked by the River. So this application has been filed with filing agencies in the city. It's zoning permit, it's planning board application, which was approved on February 23rd, 2022, and the city clerk's office on January 5th, 2022. So the application approved by the planning board was conditioned upon the following. You need to prove, proof of outside agency, outside agency approval, including but not limited to state cannabis license, DRCC and HPC for the sign. Two, a certificate, a certificate of occupancy is required within one year of approval. Three, dedication to the city of a 20-foot half width right-of-way of Church Street. Clarification on lot lines via survey. That was four. Five, address the drainage in the rear yard. Six, to comply with the city of Lambertville hours of operation ordinance. Seven, comply with the state product sales limits. Eight, provide this Lambertville Police Department full access to the video surveillance system. Nine, if the alternate site plan illustrating two parking spaces is to be utilized, then the applicant shall come back in front of the board. Ten, waste produced from the sale of cannabis shall be returned to the manufacturer and not disposed of in city refuges. Eleven, the applicant shall provide Historic Preservation Commission approval letter prior to the issuance of permits for the window film. And twelve, there will be no baking on the premises. So this, this applicant has filed, let's see. So the municipal finance officer has certified that the financial plan was submitted in the application. The city attorney has reviewed the application and all the subsequent documents submitted and has deemed the application complete. And the city clerk has certified that all fees have been paid to the city of Lambertville in accordance with the ordinance. So those are the, that basically tells you where we are with that particular application. Are there questions from the council? What's?
I don't have any questions. I guess we heard a lot of testimony. I would think that, you know, maybe some dialogue, my suggestion would be to have some dialogue around the commentary if folks wish to do that, so that the public can have the opportunity to hear some of our thinking as we walk into this decision-making. It's my suggestion.
Okay. I would just also note to the public that the council has been provided with a lot of additional documents. There was probably almost, I don't know, probably close to 300 pages total of documents.
Way more than that.
Well, let's see. Around there. Let's just, I'll just take a guess. And there was a lot of information which is not available to the public, including financial information, rental agreements, security protocols and that kind of thing. So we've had a lot, we've had access to an enormous amount of information, so we're using that to base our conversation and our decision along with the public comment tonight.
And we're doing just Baked by the River.
Doing just Baked by the River.
Then moving on to the other.
Yeah, we'll do one at a time.
So I did, I did have a couple of questions just about some of the documents in the packet that we saw. And if it's not appropriate, tell me to stop talking. In the microbusiness plan, there was a note, the Baked by the River microbusiness plan, there was a note, let me open it, let me find it, no, I'm going to open it. That was just like a sticky note on the document and I didn't know, hold on, I got to find it.
I'm asking if the note, it's almost valid or where it came from?
I'm asking, yeah, what's the purpose of the note and does it?
Oh, is that in the projection?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was some, there was some, I had actually had a thought that the projections that you listed in your, first of all, I thought your narrative was very well-written, but I thought that the projections that you made in terms of the potential sales were very optimistic. And I think that, I don't know if the planner made, made a note in this application, but there was a, there was a side note that indicated that something in, that you had written in the application was not, was not, was not the case.
Yeah, it says something about how much an ounce cost, about confirming the math, right? So do we have to?
I don't know where that, I don't know where that note came from.
I don't either.
This was something.
It's in the, it's on page five of the microbusiness.
I noticed the note as well. I, for what it's worth, I don't consider it very material to our overall decision.
Okay. And I think, I think we may have talked about this, but I'll ask it again anyway. So will there be, will customers be only account by appointment only for Baked by the River? I mean, am I asking questions of the applicants or are we just having a conversation?
I suppose if there's, I can't answer every question. I can tell you that right now. If there's a specific question, I suppose that Jesse could probably answer if you want to. Are we comfortable with Jesse stepping up to the mic and?
Yeah, I think most of these questions are actually for the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening, Jesse.
Good evening. Thank you so much for hearing my application tonight. Jesse Viller's of 13 Lambert Lane.
Pick it up, please. Yeah, we're going to have to bend over.
Jesse Viller's from Maybach, in Vernon, 13 Lambert Lane.
So, so Jesse, my questions are really around customer, like customer queuing and management of customer flow. Are walk-ins allowed without appointments? And, and kind of how you intend to manage your customer capacity to get people in and out and what are the number of customers at one time?
Certainly. So we intend to be appointment only to start off, just to re-gauge the traffic situation and make sure we're not disturbing to our neighbors and make sure we really have a sense of how many people are coming in each hour because we are a microbusiness, we are going to be keeping it small. We can't, I, the number of people we're allowed to have in the space of our building is eight, so we don't picture having more.
So it's eight?
Yeah. With that including the bud tenders.
Okay, that is a step.
Exactly. So we don't picture having more than three customers in at a time.
Okay.
And we do plan to keep it appointment only to start off in the future if we find that the traffic is, like if we're able to in the future, we do want to be able to offer walking traffic, but to start off, it's going to be appointment only.
Okay. So I guess based on the size of your site, is it necessary to escort? I understand that visitors will be issued an ID, right? That they have to wear or not?
So when people come in through.
To check in, right?
When people come to check in, they will have their state ID to prove that they're 21 or above as part of our POS system. They will be then recorded within our POS system so that we can have like all of their personal information so that if we need to reach out to them for any reason. So that's going to be our checking process. It's going to be in the security vest rule in the beginning of our shop. And so that, that will be our process for accepting people in. Sorry, did that answer the question?
I think so. What, I'm trying to get a sense of, I guess that this, your, your site is, is rather small. You're only going to have a few customers at a time, really just a handful. So you're not going to get into like issuing visitor passes or escorts or any of that?
No, we're, we're a small enough size that our security guy will be able to see them and like, it's going to be pretty small, so we're only passings.
And, and, okay, yes, that you've answered my question. And so does, what's, you have, what's your parking situation? You have a spot or you have two?
So my parking situation as it currently stands, we have ADA accessible parking in the back lot and that is our only spot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks.
I have a question. Hi, Dylan. It's been a long road, I know. I know for everybody. When you mentioned that you're gonna start off by appointment only, who else help, who else from the city would help you decide if you wanted to take walk-ins? Because that might influence the congestion on Church Street neighborhood. So like, what's your, what's your process to, I mean, you've done such great outreach as it is, to continue that if you decide to increase, to have walk-ins?
Definitely. And so that is something, one of the reasons I've done a lot of outreach, specifically to the fellow business owners on Church Street, and also business owners in the central business district in general. I've gone to dozens of stores to talk with dozens of business owners about it. And I've got many of their phone numbers, have multiple business owners on Church Street who wanna form like a little Church Street business owners co-op, to be able to kind of promote business on our street. And so it's gonna be an ongoing continuing conversation. That's what I said to the residents and the business owners that I met with on Church Street. I want this to be an ongoing continuing conversation. They all have my phone number, they all have my personal cellphone number, they can reach out to me if there's any issues. I know, like, my, some of my neighbors were talking about adding in a loading zone further down on the street, and that's something I wanna be able to support my neighbors with. And so it's gonna be an ongoing conversation, and that's, they're definitely gonna be a part of determining whether or not we can allow walk-in traffic. And I think it's also gonna be, as soon as we open up, there's probably gonna be a big rush, as there are a lot of recreational states, and then eventually it's going to kind of normalize. And so we're hoping when we get to that more normal steady traffic, then we can start considering whether or not we accept walk-ins.
One more question. Can you talk about your supply chain for your product?
Certainly. So...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, no, thank you.
So we've been talking with Green Medicine in West Amwell. We were lucky enough to meet with them with Union Chill, and they are a great local cultivator. We plan to use them as our first cultivator. We've also been talking with a number of other cultivators in the state, because we do wanna have a variety of different products to be able to feature in our store. We're looking for other small business cannabis cultivators as well. So we're still in the process, but as of right now, West Amwell Green Medicine is the one we're shooting at.
Has West Amwell given permission for a cultivator?
So they are in the process of going through their environmental, they've gone through the planning board, they've gotten their state application. They're in the last phases as well. A lot of the small business craft cannabis cultivators, which are the ones that we wanna feature in our store, are still going through these aspects of the application process, as we are. And so we wanna give those small businesses the opportunity to be our supplier before we just jump on with one of the bigger corporate dispensaries.
I'm glad you have that plan, because as, I know by the extent, size of your application, that, that the state doesn't allow any cannabis to be sold unless it's grown in the state. So you see, you've done your research on it.
Yeah, we're trying to spread it out and make sure that we get good...
Thank you, thanks.
Questions? Thank you, Jesse. Are there other comments or concerns or questions from the council on this particular application? Okay. If not, I would ask for someone in the council to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city clerk to issue a certified copy of the resolution to the application for inclusion in their application to the state of Jersey. So move.
Second.
Let's do a roll call, then, please.
Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stegman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Noack?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. I think to Council President's point and question, maybe the first thing we should do is talk about the traffic study, since it is germane to both applications. I'm gonna read the language that the planning board issued in regards to the traffic study for both Jersey Girls and Union Chill, and we'll have conversation on that to the extent that we'd like to, as it affects both, both applications. This is just one of a number of requirements that both applicants have to make at the planning board level. So here's the language regarding a traffic study. "The traffic study shall be prepared by one of three independent traffic consultants recommended by the city. The results of the traffic study shall be reviewed by a committee consisting of several members of the planning board, the board professionals, the Lambertville Police Department, and neighbors in order to prepare a traffic control plan. It should be noted that if the board professionals and Lieutenant Brown find the study to be insufficient to remedy the traffic concerns, then the application will not be approved."
That's what I, that's the main thing I'd like to discuss. I was present at the planning board meeting when Jersey Girls baked by the river.
Excuse me a second. I know we have folks on, they may not be able to hear without a microphone somewhere.
And I asked a question of the planning board attorney at that meeting, which was, what's council's role beyond tonight, which is none. I was reminded that council should not try to get in the planning board's business at any point. So these conditions are planning board conditions. I have to, I really empathize with our neighbors and the concerns about traffic, and by neighbors, I include those on the other side of the bridge. And I realize that there, when you're moving quickly, and when you don't have the authority to choose sites, you can only choose zones in which things can be placed, the realities of individual applications present some challenges. So I don't know, I think the answer unfortunately is no, but I would like to discuss, is there, what can our role be beyond tonight? Because this is a really big decision to put on anybody's shoulders, and we're saying to Lieutenant Brown and the planning board officials, hey, decide this really hard thing that there's a lot of contention about. And we have to make a decision without the benefit of the traffic study before us.
Did you, was that along the lines of the...
We talked about, yeah. Yeah, so it was, it was really a question about the process going forth, so that if there were, you know, I really think, I mean, we've heard from like, I think we were 18 people today. I got a lot of input via email and folks stopping up in the street. And there were some very common themes. One is strong support for cannabis in town, including retail, strong support for Baked by the River, and almost universal concern about traffic. And some additional traffic can be good, you know? We want people coming into town to shop at our stores and eat at our restaurants, and that's an important part of this. You know, to me, this is sort of like a Goldilocks, you know, question, is, you know, we, we don't want too little, we don't want too much, we want the right amount. And the challenge here, you know, for, I'll write a little off script here, but the, the challenge is, part of this is the supply and demand process. We can sort of guess the demand is gonna be strong. The supply is gonna be a really different and challenging component of anybody's analysis, because we don't know how many sites the state is going to approve. If we're the only site in a 50-mile radius, we're gonna have a significant problem. If there is a bunch that are approved, that changes the supply, and it's gonna change the traffic patterns and so forth. So, so, you know, I understand all the comments folks had who live near this and are concerned, you know, to me, the one thing that really resonates as a significant concern is traffic, and making it disruptive and dangerous. So I strongly support traffic studies as part of this analysis. I just wanted to get, and Council President, I spoke a little bit about this, is that, you know, there is a handoff here that's happening, and I just want that to be clear, and I guess if there's any input, you know, whether there's a, you know, whether we would have an ability to look at that or not, I guess is a question. But I have a question about that process of, you know, that handoff, what role there is for us, if any?
And I, if I had emails that reflected, Councilman's, oh, God, please. I had received emails as well, that question, that we were handing it off to a non-elected group of people to make the final decision on the traffic plan. So I guess, sure?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think, as a member of the planning board and as the mayor, I think that the planning board made the best and most responsible decision it could, given its authority. That doesn't supersede, or negate, or, you know, disallow the council from stepping in and assuming some additional responsibility or consideration on this matter. So this is where we need to turn to our most esteemed council and ask for a little bit of advice. So based on the planning board, based on the planning board requirement here about the traffic study, would the council then be allowed to have an additional final say, for example? I mean, could we, could we craft something in these, you know, in these resolutions that would allow the last word, the council the last word, as the elected officials of the city? Oh, yes, thank you.
That's why I get the big bucks.
You're doing a great job. So I think a moment of reflection might help, just so everybody understands where I think the process is gonna be going forward here, right? So somebody referenced the March 15, date before as a deadline. I think it's really an opening. The doors open on the 15th, the regulatory commission for the applications, right? So there's gonna be applications submitted, and be considered starting March 15th. It's not like the door closes that day, but it's open that day. The planning board's condition that there be a traffic study, almost certainly cannot be met by that date, right? So by definition now, the applications that, that was approved and that potentially could be approved this evening, will permit the applicants to then submit to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission their applications for the statewide licensing. And then subsequently, that condition can be analyzed still by the planning board and the professionals that are identified in that, in that condition. My point is that there will be activity in Lambertville after tonight with respect to the applications that are being considered tonight, assuming that they're approved and then submitted to the state anyway. And the definition in the planning board approval here is for particular professionals, as well as unspecified neighbors, to participate in this process, right? So there's already a little bit of generality baked into that process, no point in that. And so that's gonna unfold in a way that I think of as sort of akin to resolution compliance process in the normal planning board approval work, where you are already, in that process, handing off, I think it was the terminology you used earlier, kind of handing off some authority to board professionals and consultants in the normal course of business. And you're permitting them to make decisions about whether a condition that was imposed was met. So I think from a legal standpoint, I don't think it's necessary to add another layer here at the council level, but I think if you do that, you're not, I don't, I mean, I don't know whether the applicants would agree, but I don't think you're hampering their ability to submit the application. So let's say theoretically, you approve an application tonight with one of these conditions. It's one of the two followed, right? Because you already didn't do it by, for Baked. But if you impose a condition in one of the other two applications, like that, for example, the, after the committee meets, it's gonna report back to the council, whatever its findings are with respect to the traffic. The applicant will have already submitted their applications to the CRC, so whatever happens here is sort of separate and apart from that. But I think that what they will report back to you is similar to what they, whoever they are, those professionals, will be reporting back to the planning board in the normal course of resolution compliance. And perhaps, whatever it is that you ask of them to report back to you for, is exactly what they would be reporting back to the planning board anyway. They just normally wouldn't come back to you too, they would just report back to the board. So, I don't know if that makes any sense. I'm sort of talking a little bit ahead of time, but...
So does that mean, if we impose a condition...
Please, we're trying to speak.
If we impose, impose condition or conditions tonight, such as the traffic study, we wanna hear back from the traffic study code, because, you know, I've listened to all the people tonight, and I share those concerns about traffic, and I know council, I know other council members do as well, I'm not alone in that. And we have to think about our neighbors across the river. What, what, I guess, options are open to us as a council to influence the next step? I mean, do we have the ability to take back an approval, for lack of a better way of saying it? You know, can we hold it up? You know, I wanna see this, I think everybody wants to see this work, but what's been clear is not at the expense of people who live adjacent to those retailers. So, you know, I think, you're right, it's not gonna be done in two weeks, or next week, but we need to know this, and I would really like to have that reassurance prior to really giving the green light to go ahead all the way. And that's what I wanna know, do we have an opportunity, can we craft an opportunity for another type of vote, I guess?
I would suggest that you bear in mind the language of the condition in the planning board approval. It should be noted, I'm quoting that, it should be noted that if the board professionals and Lieutenant Brown find the study to be insufficient to remedy the traffic concerns, then the application will not be approved. So, so already, there is incorporated into that condition a sort of condition subsequent, for lack of a better term, that the applicant is going to have to demonstrate that its proposal satisfies whatever traffic, traffic concerns are raised in the court, and if not, then its approval, I don't even know, the terminology isn't sort of, I'm not sure what the right terminology is to characterize what would happen if, if April, May, June, whatever that traffic study is done, I have absolutely no idea when it would be done, but when it's done, if the board professionals and Lieutenant Brown find that this, the study is insufficient to remedy, I'm not sure what the terminology is, but by its own terms, the application will have failed, if it doesn't do that, regardless of how the CRC, I think...
Well, I think we understand that, but we, we, the answer I was given at the planning board, by the planning board attorney, was essentially, council, you need to step off from the planning board activity. So this is now, this, as you're saying, you're rightly pointing out, this, this moves, after tonight, if we approve this, the final decision is out of our hands. And it seems to me that we are not to try to influence the planning board's work on it.
I understand that the, what the planning board voted to do was to set up a body to evaluate the traffic study. I'm not sure which professional, professionals are included in that. I think it's a little litigant, probably subject to some interpretation, but I think there's certain folks that make sense, along with Lieutenant Brown.
And, and the members of the public.
And the members of the public. So that process, I think it contemplated a resolution and a decision to say, here's what we, you know, here's what we think. And I don't know that that's assured either, because you can have, you know, different people have different perspectives, as we sometimes do. So I was a little curious about that. I realize this is difficult, because you're sitting in for bill, and we're asking you for advice in an open session, which is...
I lose all the time.
For, for circumstances that nobody in this state has ever handled before, by the way.
By the same token, I can't be wrong.
Yeah, but the, you know, that's the, the issue is, I've read this to say that whatever professionals are involved, let's say it's two or three professionals, and Lieutenant Brown, that it's a hoop that, that every one of them would have to say yes, we believe this addresses the concerns. That's the way I've read the planning board's missive here. And I guess what, there has been some discussion as, is that if we're voting tonight, we're, we're out of that, well, we don't have another vote as a council. I guess there's... I guess there's another question as to whether we can comment to that process as council members or whether that is a planning board function. That's another question.
Yeah.
And whether we'd have an opportunity and whether there's a process that is, you know, are those meetings, say, subject to the Open Meetings Act? And that kind of thing. So, there'd be an opportunity for visibility as to the decision making. And there's a lot of questions in here. And maybe we don't know the answers. And it's okay. Those are the things who are popping into my head, you know.
So, is there a clear, is there, can you think of a clear legal mechanism to employ here for the council to weigh in at some point on this, in this process? To either be a part of it or to have the final, make the final determination?
Well, I suggested it probably wouldn't be all that different than what's actually going to happen anyway. You just include yourself in that process, right? Because the other thing to consider is that while the issue that we're talking about is not unimportant, right? It's clearly an important issue, the traffic issues here. Traffic issues are dealt with in the course of applications all the time by certain types of professionals, right? There are standards that guide professional planners and professional engineers when they're evaluating traffic issues and making recommendations about them. So, certainly, certain people in the process are going to emerge as probably the most significant voices. Because at the end of the day, I think the action that is analyzed is going to be reviewed in the context of whether it's arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. And my guess is that the answer to those questions is going to be driven by whether the traffic analysis is supported by standards in that industry. And the people who make those decisions are typically engineers and planners and other types of professionals that address those issues on a regular basis. Those issues are typically addressed at a planning board stage, right? Not as, and not at the stage, at a governing body stage. I think this is probably a little bit of an unusual process. As you suggested, it's new. The whole cannabis licensing process is new in general. It's also a little bit unusual to have this kind of back and forth between a governing body and a planning board. The applicant submit an application to the zoning office and an application to the planning board and an application to the governing body. It's all a little bit, you know, back and forthish. So, you're already doing things differently than really every other type of development is done. So, whatever you decide to do here, I think if you can articulate a reasonable basis for doing it, it's the wise thing to do. And if that means to you that you're going to impose as a condition of your approval, right? The planning board had its approval and then imposed its conditions. If you were going to grant your approval tonight and you were going to likewise grant conditions to it, then so be it. I think I would suggest that they be framed in such a way that they can be measured in the same way a planning board condition might be measured. And by that, I mean, standards in an industry that drive whether something is fair or not, right or not.
Ultimately, that's the planning board, right? Because these are the standards that the planning board knows and deals with rather than the council.
If I could add that, then, since the ordinance didn't require a traffic study to begin with, this is a little bit different. And maybe going forward, we look at the ordinance and we have that dealt with where we are used to, which is in a planning board. So, it is a new process and, but given the concern of everybody. Now, when a planning board sends a resolution to the city council for approval, if we didn't have approval, if we said not let the planning board approve everything, like they sent it to us for approval. So, can't they also take the study, do their study, and then send it us? If we have a caveat on it, they would send it us for approval?
Yeah, I think what you're suggesting, I don't know that there's anything that prevents you from imposing a condition of any sort. And the condition that I think you're asking about here is essentially that you want to play a decision-making role on this application with respect to this issue in the same way that the planning board is. If I understand correctly, that's what you're suggesting. I'm not sure there's anything legally that prevents that. It's just, it's uncommon because as you talked about already, that's sort of an issue normally addressed at the planning board stage. Sort of opens the door to the planning board and its professionals following the process identified in the resolution and coming to a conclusion. And then it coming back to this body and you coming to a different conclusion. Although, in most instances, I think that would be really challenging to live with. In this instance, I'm not sure it's, why do you have a role anyway, right? I mean, if you have a role to play in approving the application, then exert it.
Yeah, I'd say in the end, that makes sense to me, that the planning board is the board that makes the decision and calls. I mean, in the end, I think, I mean, for me as the mayor and maybe possibly for us as council, we just want to be extra careful in terms of understanding. And we also want to make sure that, you know, to some degree, the public can hold its accountable for something that happens in the city, right? And so, you know, if we approve these authorizations, you know, I think that there's just a sense that we want to help take ownership of this process. It may not be the right, it may not be, it is uncommon. And when I think about it in kind of a clear-headed way, it seems to me that ultimately the planning board made the right decision and that our trust should go in the professionals, the people who aren't necessarily, we don't have a point of view other than, you know, kind of coming up with the correct answer, right?
If I heard your, I appreciate that. Your advice here, I think, was, I want to make sure that folks are clear about it, is that we cannot act in an arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable manner. That if the professionals looking at standards that are sort of identified in the industry and evaluate based on those standards, come forward and say, "We think that this is appropriate and addresses the concerns of the community," it would be difficult for us to act other than arbitrarily. We, you know, we'd have to have a very strong and compelling reason for why they were wrong to want to change that. So, if we did, you know, want to insert ourselves in this process, I think we'd have to go in with our eyes open. If they're telling us, the professionals, that the answer is yes, for us to say no would probably expose us to some challenges absent really compelling reasons that came out afterwards. Is that fair to say?
I think that's a fair summary. By, almost by definition, if the planning board professionals applying standards in that industry have determined that something works and then you determine that it doesn't, that you're not satisfied with it for one reason or another, it would be difficult, I think, to sustain that governing body. But I think somebody used the term earlier, I can't remember who, Council President, President, or Mayor, it was you maybe, about sort of leading the professionals to be the ones to make the decision that is something that you feel like the governing body should sort of wear, right? But I would suggest that it's not uncommon, as we talked about before, in the resolution compliance world, to have a planning board impose, approve an application and impose conditions on it that are determined to be met or not met by board professionals. So, part of being a professional is sometimes making a decision about whether a condition is met or not, applying your own professionally guided judgment.
I mean, normally when there's a condition, I'm sorry. Normally when there's a condition, it's easily determined. You know, did you get approval from SHPO? Did you, you know, get a DEP approval? Those are, you know, easily measured in terms of compliance. I think our, you know, what you've helped us think through a little bit here today is that the process is not without its rigor by the professionals. If there would be some, if it was just sort of a, like, "Yeah, I guess it's okay," kind of a decision-making process, that doesn't give me much comfort. But, you know, a review based on professional standards is important. I, you know, I don't have a problem with us inserting ourselves as an end process, but I think we need to go in eyes wide open that, you know, we're sort of like a reviewing court where like it's a presumption that it's, that the underlying experts have made their determination correctly. And absent some sort of compelling, you know, problem, you know, we would, you know, be compelled to.
A quick follow-up. Would the, would the, would the study that the professionals will be doing, which is not just our professionals, but the company that is going to be hired to have a traffic study, would they present it to the planning board and the planning board either approve or deny it?
I doubt it. I mean, it doesn't have to be that way. And we should remember that what this language does is it sets out a framework within which somebody on behalf of the board is going to identify three independent traffic consultants and the applicant's going to choose one. That consultant is going to undertake the study. That study is then going to be reviewed. So, that's sort of the first level of professional consultant that's going to address the issue. Then the board professionals and Lieutenant Brown and again, the neighbors, whatever that group is composed of, is going to review it. So, that's sort of the second level of review informed by professional standards. And I, there's no requirement in here that that then be reported back to the board for another decision at that point. But, so, it might just be a report back from that group to the planning board. And I think, as you asked before about the Open Public Meetings Act and so on, I do not envision that this is a group that meets in the way that's governed by the Open Public Meetings Act that generates documents and that are subject to the Open Public Records Act and so on. They're going to, whatever document gets generated is going to, again, I think, be akin to what's normally generated in the resolution compliance process.
So, I have to play devil's advocate just because I was at IT for a long time and always asked the what if questions. So, what if the professionals and Lieutenant Brown present recommendations or have findings, but the residents are still not satisfied? Like, to me, that's the worst possible outcome, right? Because we, you know, we tried to put forward, you know, the applicant agrees to abide by the traffic study, but the residents may still feel dissatisfied. And I guess I'm asking this question for the rest of us because I think we have to acknowledge that as a potential, as a real potential outcome, okay? We can't just assume that because we're all sitting here and the planning board said, you know, these residents, we can't assume that everybody's going to just hold hands and agree all the time. So, I'd kind of like to, you know, kind of put that out there because to me, it's like the elephant in the room. I mean.
Well, there's no requirement in this.
Right, it's always a potential, right?
Yeah, and I think it's to be expected.
Yeah, and I would hate to see, as competent as Lieutenant Brown is, I'd hate to see him have to go into disguise or witness protection because he may have a danger that the community didn't agree with. So, I, you know, I mean, that's kind of why we're here, right? Like, you know, we're the ones that are supposed to, you know, make the decisions. And if the public is not always going to agree with us, but we should have, you know, good conscience and feeling and reasoning for our decisions. And I feel uncomfortable, and I think you alluded to that, Council President, with, you know, imposing that decision on a group of people that are just doing their job. You know what I mean? Like, yeah, I don't know. I don't know that we have to, we're certainly not going to address that. I mean, we saw that tonight. I just want to put it out there as a likelihood, as a possibility.
If I could add something, I think it's, not only is it a possibility, it's probably, it's likely, right? So, remember that you don't zone property by property. You zone by zone. So, you don't go into a zoning process and target specific properties and say, "You can do this here, you can do that there." It's by zone, right? So, then, when somebody goes to a board to try and develop a piece of property, frequently, that's why neighbors of that property are statutorily required to be given notice, right? Because they have an interest in it. So, they can attend and find out what's going on and voice their concerns about it. But at the end of the day, the application is governed by usually identifiable planning and engineering standards. And if, in many instances, neighbors of a piece of property that is to be developed object to the development that's proposed for that piece of property. But if the planning standards and engineering standards and so on are met, then as a legal matter, that developer is going to be permitted to develop that piece of property, even in a way that residents might object to. So, I know that nobody takes it lightly, but that is a common experience in the development world. So, I think that the things that we are talking about here are really not that unusual when you're weighing concerns that people who live in a particular area have against identifiable zoning, engineering, planning standards.
Thank you.
I wanted to echo to Councilman Segman's point that, you know, I think we envisioned this. We were an early adopter, realize, as Sean noted, and we have a responsibility to keep after this. This is an evolving and fast-moving world. And as an early adopter, you know, we need to look at our existing resolution to see whether it needs to be modified. And I think that there's some, you know, we've learned some things to this process hindsight is 2020 here. But, you know, we should be looking at whether there's modifications. I'm happy to help work on that and listen to helps of residents and so forth. But I think it's an important part of this promise that we have to make here is that we need to review it and tweak it if necessary.
And just lastly, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments. I would just say that I think that as a member of the planning board, I think, I gave the board credit for sort of acting in a way that I thought was reasonable to both the applicants and the public in a late-night meeting that went on until almost 1:00 o'clock one night, 2:00 o'clock another night. It felt like the best possible way to increase the process in a responsible way without killing somebody's right to do this or killing somebody's right to do that. So, I'm comfortable with this as a process. And I do agree that we should go back and look at the ordinance again. I think that there are improvements and edits to be made. But I think that, I think this is where we are. And so, we should, we should consider moving forward. Are there any questions on this or concerns before we kind of move on to the applications?
I have a more question. I think the public should know that the licenses are renewed annually, correct? These cannabis licenses, it orders it every three years or, can't they set the standard?
Annually.
Annually. So, if the council, the planning board, or however we function, however we deal with that particular question, is not satisfied with having gone through a year of having this happen, then the applicant has to, has to come back and, do they need council approval to renew the license?
I'm not an expert. I don't believe so. I think it's a state thing.
I believe it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the answer? I don't believe they need council approval each year for their application.
It's on a state level.
To renew the license, they don't need any kind of approval. That we missed the level.
Don't we have in our ordinance that there is some ongoing review process? That it's not, you don't just get to open a cannabis business to stay there forever?
Yeah, the ordinance does include an annual renewal fee on the city level as well. So, I would imagine that includes a review process to go with. Similar, I think, to the ABC licenses, there's, you know, a new permit is issued every year with a renewal.
And there is, for the ABC, I mean, this really didn't outline the renewal process, other than there was an annual fee. But with an ABC license, you annually approve all of the applications. You do that in June because they expire.
What kind of their grounds or conditions on the way the ABC is run right now?
No, no, I mean, those conditions for the ABC are based on complaints that are filed and investigated by the police department. The police department never met or met. And the police department, that effort, that May or April will start doing their reviews of all of your ABC licenses and make a recommendation. And that's based on their files and what they pull up in their history.
If I see what you're... I'd like to add too, I'm looking at section 16-16 of the statute. Local permits issued are valid for a period of one year and shall be renewed in accordance with the provisions of this chapter. And then later subsection C says, "Renewal of any permit shall be governed by any code amendments, additional restrictions, or changes in regulations adopted since the previous permit was issued."
Okay, so we don't have to worry about grandfathering. We can change, we can modify based on learning. That's, thank you, that's very, that's a critical.
So the answer is that we can impose other conditions on a renewal of a license based on what's happened during the first time, the last time it was renewed?
We change our work.
But we should change our ordinance. I mean, I think that's the state statute which supersedes this anyway, but it would be great to have that outlined, that process for us all to follow.
So if we change the ordinance after folks are being permitted to get a license, so there's no grand, so how does that handle grandfathering?
Well, that's exactly what that statute says.
So even though it's been approved, you can still...
Yeah, this language says, "Renewal of any permit shall be governed by any code amendments, additional restrictions, or changes in regulations adopted since the previous permit was issued." That is the very antithesis of grandfathering. You can't, you might as well say...
I just had to hear it again.
Yeah, you look so good, so satisfying.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for pointing that out. I think that is a really critical point because there's so many unknowns here and, you know...
I don't want to speak of the legislature, but I'm sure there was a thoughtful piece of the state legislation recognizing that this is a brand-new industry. People are going to be, this is how you're going to be facing difficult, you know, questions. And it allows them to correct, you know, mid-course, but after...
This was building for years and years and years, and then boom, everybody had to act by a certain date. So this is sort of a built-in governor of such people.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
So basically, it is in the best interest of the applicant to make sure that whatever is agreed on for traffic and circulation, that what they do could supersede that with more, with further restrictions if they so choose.
So if we update our, or amend our ordinance, and in a year we find that the traffic is just unsustainable, even with all the traffic studies, we can impose a timed restricted, you know, measures. We have a lot of flexibility.
We could change, we could change the zoning, change the allowed zones as well.
All right, that's, thank you.
Recap to where, so...
So, are we good on the, are we good now on the parking study? Are there any other questions before we consider the two applications? I might suggest we take a five-minute break. Are people comfortable with that idea? So let's take a five-minute, let's take a 10-minute break, but really no more than 10 minutes. Because we're probably going to be a while, no? Yeah, we'll take a short break.
We can maybe six minutes, we'll be back at 9:00.
You can do this without having to throw a wasabi.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to begin again.
Was it rain?
Yes.
I'm not my laundry.
All right, so we are now going to take up the question of a resolution for Union Chill Cannabis. So I'm going to read the text of the resolution and then we'll begin the general discussion. Where is Union, where is Union Chill Cannabis Company LLC filed an application with the following agencies in the city of Landerville? A zoning permit, planning board application. The approval was granted on March 2, 2022, and the city clerk's office on January 31, 2022. Where is the application approved by the planning board? It was conditioned upon the following. Provide approval from outside agencies, including but not limited to the State of New Jersey Cannabis License, E&amp;R Canal Commission, and Historic Preservation Commission. Comply with the sale limitations as specified in the standards for the cannabis retailer conditional use. Obtain a building permit or certificate of occupancy within one year of approval. Cannabis waste will be sent back to the cultivator/manufacturer for disposal. There should be no baking on the premises. Property owner will work with neighbors in lots 29 to 34 to designate specific parking spaces. No parking signs will be posted along the property line in common lots 32 to 34 adjacent to the driveway from Elm Street. The applicant will direct customers to utilize the COVA system on the website to pre-register for appointments or pre-order products. All ADA parking spaces will have curb subs installed and will be asphalted concrete. The current location of the refuse containers are within the special flood hazard area. The applicant agrees to relocate these containers. A loading area will be added adjacent to the ADA parking spaces and ingrained in slopes. The applicant has agreed to provide a truck turning plan to demonstrate adequate maneuverability for the largest piece of fire apparatus to access the site. The Landerville Police Department will have full access to the video surveillance system. All video surveillance will be retained for at least 30 days, which is in compliance with state regulations. A traffic study shall be prepared by one of three independent traffic consultants recommended by the city. The results of the traffic study shall be reviewed by a committee consisting of several members of the planning board, the board professionals, the Landerville Police Department, and neighbors in order to prepare a traffic control plan. It should be noted that if the board professionals and Lieutenant Brown find the study insufficient to remedy the traffic concerns, then the application will not be approved. The applicant must comply with the state ordinance regarding the size of the proposed sign, which is 16 square feet. Approval from the Historic Preservation Commission is required for the proposed sign, the ADA chairlift, and any potential window treatments as necessary to comply with state regulations regarding window transparency for cannabis users. The registered surveyor must sign and seal the existing condition plans. So the certified municipal finance officer has certified that the finance plan was submitted in the application. The city attorney has reviewed the application and all subsequent documents submitted and has deemed that the application is complete. And the city clerk has certified that all fees have been paid to the city of Landerville in accordance with the ordinance. And now it's up to council questions or comments.
I have one question, I have one question for this moment. I know that when you put in the application, you provided a lease. You were setting, I'm sorry, you provided a lease that, from my records, that expires at the end of this month.
Yes.
Why are we putting up to the microphone to everyone?
There's no microphone. Here.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, Lauren Kew from Union Chill. Yes, we did do a temporary lease, a small lease, just to hold it. And we are breaking the process and we're renegotiating it right now. So we were, we'll have a five-year lease with a five-year option, hopefully tomorrow.
Well, suppose your application, and this is for everyone. Suppose your application doesn't go through...
And we will have an ex-apply saying, "We do not pay local and we're state licensing that we can get out of lease." But we don't want to do that.
Well, thank you to the...
Oh, I have a question.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm right here.
Okay, so there was a thing here about the loading dock, loading area. So are you able to tell us about your plan for receiving deliveries or...
Yes, our deliveries are going to be made in a vehicle the size of a Lenny UPS truck. There's not going to be any tractor trailers or anything like that. And it will come in the back door, which there already is loading back there. And it'll come in, and it'll go right into our product room or our safest.
Okay. And you have onsite security personnel, right?
Correct.
And they will be escort, well, the security personnel, the escorting visitors? How is the escorting process working?
We don't really escort. What happens is you walk in, there'll be a security guard there, he'll check your ID. There's a glass wall, and there's a waiting area. When there's room, he'll let them in. And we'll also have the security guard out in the parking lot just to make sure. So it's a very big parking lot, there's over 70 spaces there. So we don't want anybody sitting in the parking lot smoking pot. But they can wait in their car, and we'll buzz them in if there's too many people.
Okay. Will the security be armed?
No.
And how, did you, did you anticipate expected annual revenue? Or you, is that something you're willing, that you're able to share? I don't want to probe the things that are inappropriate.
Yeah, I don't have that on top of my head.
Okay.
It was in our applicant, it was in our...
I know, whatever.
Yeah. I can resubmit it to you if you have it.
I'm sure it's in there. I was just trying to get a sense of, you know, what the real volume, you know, what your anticipated volume is. So, you know, I've heard projections from others about how many customers you think you're going to have? And do you have that information, like how many...
Well, we're going to have one-on-one consultation. So when people come in, it'll be one blood tender per person. How many people are coming in is a moving target, right? As we already discussed, we don't know how many, if you're going to approve everybody. We don't know if West Hamel's going to approve people. So it's really hard to tell without having that data.
The supply chain question that Councilman Stegman asked earlier, I think, I mean, these questions kind of apply to every applicant now.
It's going to be me and Jesse, yeah.
Right. Is there, are there, is there an expectation that's going to be added with supply chain?
Yes, yeah, yes, there is. The state's working very hard on it.
Okay. I did have a question about one of the documents, one of the pages in your application. It's page 76 of 136. There's a picture that shows the distance from the school map. Yes, it, it makes it look like that's not 204 North Union Street. It's like Perry Street or something.
Really?
Yeah.
I wouldn't have to go back and look at it.
Yeah, you should look at that.
But we did have a correctional survey twice. So I would just look at that document.
I can bring up the document, I can show you where it is. So, yeah. Because it says like, it says...
Are we sure it wasn't from a park?
It just says, I'm assuming it was your location because it was distance from the school map. And one point was the school...